Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four County Commission Meeting and call the meeting to order. And if you would, please stand for the invocation this morning will be given by Paul Platis from the Greek Orthodox Church. And after, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Omnipotent God of the universe, we gather here today in your presence and with the County Commissioners, the elected officials of our county, enlighten them to do the best of their ability to better the life of the citizens of Mobile County and in the whole state. This is what we ask, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the reprieve and justice for all.
Commissioner, if I may, I would, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Paul Platis and Mr. Bobby Feropoulos for being with us this, this morning. They are part of the, the Greek community and this morning we had a contingency here to raise the Greek flag in observance of Independence Day. The Greece was under Ottoman rule for over, for four hundred years and when they finally won their freedom, this, they have been commemorating this every year since. And so this is an annual event here at Government Plaza. We also had this morning the bishop from the Diocese of Atlanta, His Grace Bishop Sebatinos and also Father Matthew Carter of our Greek, Enunciation Greek Orthodox Church here in Mobile. So, welcome gentlemen, we're very glad to have you here today.
Thank you. Um, now we're gonna have a couple retirement certificates and recognize a couple retirees and also at the end of that, we're gonna do the, uh, uh, resolution recognizing Greek Independence Day and that will be presented by Commissioner Hudson. And, um, I don't know if these guys are here or not, but Brian Kegley and Glenn Hodge, Glenn Hodge and Brian Kegley, step right up, gentlemen. All right, we're here now. You know, we all, we have a lot of retirees, um, that we recognize, but today we're recognizing, um, our county administrator who's been here for, um, over thirty-four years and, uh, who we're sad to see go and our county engineer, um, who also we're sad to see him go as well, over, over twenty-nine years, almost thirty years. So, um, it's a, a very touching thing to lose two of your highest people in administrative positions at your department at the same time. And we have not, we, it's on the agenda, we haven't, I don't think we've approved for either one of them to retire, but we're gonna recognize them anyway. So this one is for, uh, for, uh, our administrator Glenn Hodge and it says that, um, the Mobile County Commission presenting this certificate to Glenn Hodge and wishing to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for thirty-four years and one month of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired, inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness and continued success in your retirement. That was for you Glenn. And then Brian, this says the same thing except twenty-nine years and six months. Hand that to you and gonna, yeah. Gonna, uh, ask if either one of you would like to say a few words?
You saw where the commissioners said wisdom? Gray hair is wisdom? You see what I mean? Anyway, I do wanna take this time to say thank you and I appreciate, it's an honor, it has been an honor. The journey has been good. The team, what can I say? We had many challenges. We had COVID nineteen, the cyber attack, and then work day, which was really some work. But you know what? We got through it all and I'm proud of you. I'm very proud. So, you continue to carry on the vision while I continue to enjoy the next chapter in my life. I wanna thank you again.
Brian, would you like to say a few words?
Glenn, it's turning over a new chapter, opening up another chapter in life. Twenty-nine and a half years, it's, it's been a good ride. I've enjoyed the majority of my time here. There were a few years kinda rough, but leadership starts at the top. I've had wonderful commissioners to work for, still do, you're in my prayers on a daily basis. I leave you in the very capable hands of the sixth floor county engineering staff that I have thoroughly worked with. Another day, another chapter. Godspeed.
Okay, I have a resolution to present in observance of Greek Independence Day and I think the thing to do may be to go upstairs. Right, please gentlemen. Again, it's wonderful to have you here. The resolution reads in observance of Greek Independence Day, March two thousand and twenty-four, whereas the Mobile County Commission recognizes Greek Independence Day, which falls annually on March twenty-fifth and has been celebrated since the end of the Greek Revolution in eighteen twenty-one. The day honors the Greeks' fight for freedom after being suppressed by the Ottoman Empire for over four hundred years. And whereas, inspired by the ideals of liberty, self-governance and democracy, Greece's Declaration of Independence inspired other European countries to become democracies outside of the ruling empires. And whereas, on Greek Independence Day, we celebrate our special ties of friendship, history and shared values with the Mobile Greek community, we applaud the many contributions made by Greek immigrants and descendants to enhance our culture, enrich our commerce, defend our freedom and advance our civilization. And whereas, in Mobile County, many Greek Americans have influenced and enhanced our society through their devotion to community, family and faith. Now, therefore let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission proclaims March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four as Greek Independence Day in Mobile County, Alabama. We join with our Greek neighbors and friends on recognizing Greece gaining its independence. Furthermore, we encourage citizens to honor Greek Independence Day. Signed by all three commissioners and our interim administrator, Eddie Kerr.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the commissioners for their support of the Greek community of Mobile and our Greek community is thankful because we're living in a city that is support us as ethnic group, is support us as fellow Americans and is support us in all our endeavors. I would like to take this opportunity again to thank all of you for your patience today. I know most of you didn't know the history of Greece, but we have to remember the past in order to move into the future. Thank you.
All right, Cherie, do we have any speakers this morning?
No, sir, no one signed up to speak today.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kerr.
Good morning commissioners. Item one, approve list of claims.
So moved. Second.
Two, hold public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance report.
This public hearing is now in session, are there any comments for or against? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Three, approve renewal of annual maintenance agreement with Elite, a Thompson Reuters Business for Mobile County Attorney's Office in the amount of two thousand and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved. Second.
Four, approve appropriation contract with Pauline O'Rourke Elementary Parent Teacher Organization in the amount of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars from District Three Education Funds to purchase a Lou Uno interactive playground for Pauline O'Rourke Elementary School.
So moved. Second.
Five, approve appropriation contract with Dauphin Island Heritage and Arts Council in the amount of five thousand from District Three Education Funds for the Dauphin Island Native American Experience.
So moved. Second.
Six, approve sponsorship agreement with Casa Mobile in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for its Hats and Horses, a Kentucky Derby event to benefit Casa Mobile funds will be divided as follows.
So moved. Second.
Seven, approve appropriation contract with Project Faith Breast Cancer Intervention Program in the amount of two thousand and five hundred from District One Commission Funds to cover the cost of screening mammograms and ultrasounds for underserved communities in Mobile County.
So moved. Second.
Eight, accept resignation of Glenn, of Glenn L. Hodge as a board member of Mobile County Communications District due to retirement and approve appointment of Eric Linsley to serve the remaining term which will expire November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Nine, accept resignation of Dr. Lyda Javier Farrell as a board member serving on the Mobile County Board of Human Services and approve Dr. Reginald Sykes to serve the remaining term which will expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
I think that should be human resources unless they've changed that.
Okay, we've made that note. Ten, approve assignment to Smith Mechanical Consulting and Design for chilled water piping repairs at Mobile Metro Barracks. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associated with the development of repairs to the chilled water piping system in the amount of nine thousand one hundred dollars.
So moved. Second.
Eleven, authorize advertising for bids for equipment upgrades to Metro Gell Sewer System.
So moved. Second.
Twelve, approve Africa Town revitalization revitalization project signs, work to be performed by Mobile County Public Works in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents from District One Commission Funds for Africa Town Redevelopment Corporation.
So moved. Second.
Thirteen, approve professional services agreement with Catalyst in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the labor and time cost to migrate the court's data from the current servers to new virtual servers pending legal review.
So moved. Second.
Fourteen, rescind renewal of subscription agreement with Civic Plus in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, eighty-five cents, approved in the February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four minutes, agenda item number thirty-nine, for C Click Fix Connector for Arc GIS. Terms and conditions were revised.
So moved. Second.
Fifteen, approve software subscription agreement with Civic Plus in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-five cents with automatic one-year renewal term and five percent annual uplift fee in year two for C Click Fix Connector for Arc GIS for the County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Sixteen, approve six-month extension of the contract approved in the March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three minutes, agenda item number twenty-eight, with Hersick and Webster Creative Professionals to create a set of twelve marks for various assets of the Mobile County Park System. This extension does not increase the contract amount.
So moved. Second.
Seventeen, approve contract amendment number one with Stokes Consulting Firm for Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan Project to extend the performance period and add additional project management and technical support services pending legal review.
So moved. Second.
Eighteen, approve professional services contract with United Family Development Corporation in the amount of fifty-five thousand from District One Commission Funds to provide training to assist low and moderate income first-time homebuyers pursuing homeownership to qualify for and obtain mortgage, mortgages primarily for those interested in purchasing homes in the Africa Town and Doc, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior neighborhoods. All Mobile County residents are eligible to apply.
So moved. Second.
Nineteen, approve appropriation contract with the independent order of Oddfellows Grand Bay Lodge Number Seventy-Three doing business as Grand Bay Watermelon Festival in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred from District Three Commission Funds for operational expenses.
So moved. Second.
Twenty, approve retirement of W. Brian Kegley, the second, as county engineer effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-one, authorize assistant county engineer Kimberly N. Sanderson during the absence of the county engineer effective April first, two thousand and twenty-four to carry out all duties and to have such authority of the county engineer pursuant to statutory and general law, including but not limited to those duties provided pursuant to Alabama Code.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-two, award bid to M.W. Rogers Construction Company for Project Escataba Hollow Park and Campground Improvements, Phase One B, for their base bid in the amount of four million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, alternate number one bid in the amount of seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, and alternate number two bid in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and three, twenty-three dollars for a total low bid of five million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents, and authorize execution of contract documents.
So moved. Second.
Uh, number twenty-three, we're gonna hold over. Twenty-four, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-five, approve renewal services agreement with Terminex Commercial in the amount of six hundred and nine dollars for Liquid Defense System for the James T. Strickland Youth Center.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-six, approve renewal services agreement with Terminex Commercial in the amount of five hundred and sixty-five dollars for Liquid Defense System for the John Archer Agricultural Center.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-seven, approve software renewal agreement with S.H.I. International Corporation in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents for the Fortinet Support Co.-Term for the County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-eight, approve renewal agreement with Bitwarden in the amount of six thousand dollars for the Enterprise Organization seat for the County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-nine, approve renewal agreement with ThinkGuard in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents for Cisco Stealth Watch Flow Rate for the County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Thirty, approve renewal agreement with ThinkGuard in the total amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and four cents for Cisco Secure Email Cloud Advantage in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents and Cisco Enhanced Support for Cisco Email Security in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents for the County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-one, approve professional services agreement with Avila Engineering Group for assessing and appraising billboard towers in Mobile County in the amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-two, approve thirty-six month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation for one Sharp copier under the current State of Alabama contract in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents per month for Camp Two.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-three, approve thirty-six month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation for one Sharp copier under the current State of Alabama contract in the amount of one hundred and sixty-two dollars, thirty-seven cents per month for the Board of Registars.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-four, approve thirty-six month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation for one Sharp copier under the current State of Alabama contract in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents per month for the Environmental Enforcement Department.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-five, authorize assignment of Task Order Number Four to master services contract with Volker for Mobile County Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. This task order provides additional payment of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents for program management, monitoring and compliance and administrative services for round two and remaining funding awards for the program pending final legal review.
So moved. Second.
I'm, I'm abstention.
Thirty-six, approve subrecipient agreement with MLK Redevelopment Corporation to award funding in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty-five dollars as part of the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan Project, including in the Mo, included in the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan pending final reg, legal review. Costs associated with the sub, subrecipient agreement will be paid from an ARCA project in the amount of five hundred thousand and from a CCP project in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty-five dollars from District One Carryover Funds.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-seven, approve functional reclassification of roads as listed below requested by the Engineering and Public Works Department as follows.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-eight, approve assigning contract for professional engineering services for region-wide transportation operations program congestion management to Kimley Horn and Associates.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-nine, approve transfer of maintenance duties from the County of Mobile to the City of Creola for the segment of Lister Lane from Old Highway Forty-three eastward to the end of maintenance. Length of roadway is approximately one thousand, four hundred feet. Lister Lane was reportedly paved by the City of Creola and the Mayor of Creola has requested that the County of Mobile relinquish maintenance.
So moved. Second.
Forty, approve contract amendment number two with Merquard and Williams for additional lanes on Airport Boulevard to add additional engineering and design services for revisions to environmental documents. The maximum allowable fee is twenty-six thousand, three hundred.
So moved. Second.
Forty-one, approve final plat of Hamilton Ridge, Phase Three and accept road rights aways as shown on the subdivision plat for the streets as follows and accept the roads in this subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads and accept the warranty deed for the rights of way indicated on this plat.
So moved. Second.
Forty-two, approve preliminary and final plat of resubdivision of a portion of Lot Four Coger Edition Unit Two and preliminary and final plat of Air-Snow Subdivision, resubdivision of Lot Two.
So moved. Second.
Forty-three, approve supplemental agreement number one with John G. Walton Construction Company for Randolph Foster Road Drainage Improvements to increase the contract by five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-six cents for erosion prevention.
So moved. Second.
Forty-four, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track Fifteen on Ziegler Boulevard in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars for Project Ziegler Boulevard Additional Lanes.
So moved. Second.
Forty-five, approve CCP project for locating water and sewer lines for the Water and Sewer Board of City of Pritchard that are in conflict with, conflict with county projects in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. This will be paid as additional services, services to Neil Schaefer for the existing contracts as follows.
So moved. Second. Abstain. Abstain.
Forty-six, award bid to John G. Walton Construction Company for Project Blackwell Nursery Road South Resurfacing Restoration and Rehabilitation for their low bid in the amount of $1,227,647.77.
So moved. Second.
Brian Kegley would like to address the commission on an item.
Commissioners, I delivered a letter to your offices Thursday afternoon, March 21st. I'd like to read this into the minutes if I could, please. Pursuant to Act Number 2019-307, the Engineering Department has evaluated the partial petition received for Debra Lane and Rogers Road located in Commission District III. Our evaluation has determined that the petition as submitted is incomplete, and a portion of the petition was submitted outside of the month of January 2024. In accordance with Section 3 of Act 2019-307, all of the property owners must sign the petition, and the petition shall be submitted during the month of January. For the reasons stated, the noted petition does not meet the criteria for consideration. Thank you.
Do we need to act, or are you just reporting to us?
I'm just reporting. Ordinarily, we are putting this on a commission agenda, but looking at the law, it does not mandate that it be a commission agenda item. It just needs to be presented to the commission.
Thank you. Item number forty-seven, commission announcements and/or comments.
I don't either. The only thing I want to, I guess we're going to have an Indigent Care Board meeting. And I think before that, I think Jay has a request for an executive session.
We will, we duty an executive session will last no more than twenty minutes. You can adjourn after the, this meeting to conduct the Indigent Care Board meeting, convene an executive session, and not return. There'll be nothing that the commission need to vote on after I certify.
Are we in the executive meeting room?
We can, yes. We'll go in there for a few minutes. For the county administrator nodding his head, who has to keep. So if this, at this time, I would ask the commission to consider going to executive session to talk about matters of economic development. I would certify that the reasons for economic development are appropriate in the Alabama Open Meetings Act and certify that same as a lawyer licensed to practice law in Alabama. I know Mr. Doan have not proven that yet to him, but I will. Executive session will take no more than twenty minutes, and we will not need to come out of, we will not need to return to conclude the meeting.
Aye.
Did you roll call vote? Okay, thank you.
Aye. Do we need to adjourn? I guess we need to.
You're in recess, you recessed this meeting through executive session subject to the Indigent Care Board meeting.
All right. I guess we'll call an Indigent Care Board meeting to order.
Item one, approve minutes of the meeting of February 26th, 2024.
So moved. Second.
Two, accept report from the Mobile County to balance in the Indigent Care Fund at February 29th, 2024. Funds available, $183,146.27. A check was received on February 23rd from the oil and gas taxes to the Indigent Care Fund in the amount of $40,298.10 and deposited on February 26th.
So moved. Second.
Item three, approve request for motion to adjourn until April 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Subject to the executive session.
Second.
So we'll.
Go back.
Go into executive session, and then we'll adjourn from there until April 8th, 2024.